Oh my goodness, only thirty minutes.
Mr. Moon, if I may, that's true. You had a request late last week to add a little time to that, and so we didn't make the change on the agenda, but if we slip over half hour, then we'll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have a couple of things to discuss, and I need to give you an update on one of the committee, advisory committees. But basically, we want to spend not too much time, but no more than ten minutes on the first topic, which has to do with School Board Summer Retreat in July. The Governance Committee has a recommendation of the topics. We consider what came out of a chairman's meeting. We started with recommendations from chairman's meeting, and the Governance Committee deliberately had engaged our consultant, Dr. Hank Jimichrow of HIA, and we have recommendations for you to consider. If you look at the agenda item for 1.02, take a look, we're gonna start from Friday, July twenty-two, July twenty-second. We'll start at three o'clock. Hopefully not to spend more than three hours to discuss a strategic plan, an overall assessment on strategic plan. And that portion's discussion is going to be facilitated by a superintendent and other senior staff on Friday. That's the three hours. And on the next day, July twenty-third, we'll start from eight-thirty in the morning, and hopefully we'll be done by two forty-five. That includes a discussion of role of the board for one and a half hours, and another one and a half hours for the LT School Board interface. And then we'll take a lunch break, and then have a board self-evaluation for two hours. So that is that. Hopefully it will be done by two forty-five. So this is a recommendation, unanimous recommendation from the Governance Committee, and I'll take questions and comments. Chairman Hines.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had one question, but first I wanted to suggest that when we talk about the role of the board, we include in there, especially for new members, the different roles that we play as board members. So chair of a committee, meeting manager, chair and vice chair, liaison to advisory committees, that sort of thing. Just go over what those roles are in our Strategic Governance Manual, and then maybe talk about our understanding of what those things mean, if that's okay as part of that conversation.
I mean, that's fine. That's fine with me as Governance Committee Chair.
Okay, I had a question, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is on board self-evaluation. I just wondered, did you guys flesh out at all? Hank will be helping us.
Hank could be facilitating discussion of all three topics on that day. But when you talk about different roles that board members play as a part of role of the board, we might need some assistance from a leadership, as it could be chair or it could be vice chair. Because Hank may not be as much aware of the different roles that board members play in Fairfax County, especially, you know, meeting managers.
Okay, yeah, understood. So I don't know if you want that, adding the roles of different jobs that board members take on as a next step, or it's just something you want to take back to governance. That's fine.
Okay. I thought I had two hands here. Ms. McLaughlin, and then Corbin Sanders.
I just, as someone who serves on governance, I wanted to add a little more context, and very much appreciate Mr. Moon noting that it was unanimous, the recommendation we're bringing before you this morning. And I do appreciate what Ms. Hines is saying about the role of the board, and trying to cover some of the other things that we do, especially as it relates to Strategic Governance Manual. But one suggestion I might have is that we would ask board members to do their homework first. I don't want to lose precious time with us sort of doing a step-by-step walkthrough. I'd rather that, you know, people study it, and then we have more of a conversation about what then that means. And veteran board members could maybe just add maybe what lessons learned from those roles. But I would worry a little bit about so much of our retreats. We try and really allow more board dialogue as opposed to presentation of information.
Okay, that's a good suggestion, and I'll be asking Madam Krug to send, prepare notes to all board members as far as homework is concerned. Ms. Corbin Sanders?
Yes, thank you. I'm very much looking forward to this retreat. I think it's going to be really important, especially since it's the first retreat since we've all taken office. And so I do welcome the concept of spending a lot more time in dialogue with my colleagues. Can I offer one suggestion that, or actually two. One is to have a discussion about board communications as part of the retreat. And then the second is to have a wrap-up at the end, because we have board self-evaluation, but we really don't have a capstone of, and this is where, you know, this is what has come out of this meeting.
Okay, I think both of them could, you know, potentially could be done as a part of board self-evaluation. If we do the self-evaluation, we could, you know, certainly say where the board wants to go, wants to work on for the upcoming year. That could be part of your wrap-up. And as far as board communication is, again, it could be part of board self-evaluation, whether we are doing any effective job in communicating with the community at large and other stakeholders.
But I think it sends a very powerful message to the community that we care about communications. If we specifically put in there a section on it, and then just wrap up, it's one of those things of just being.
Okay, that's good advice. I'm gonna say, as a part of the board self-evaluation, I'm gonna list those communications as a wrap-up, particularly as a subpolet. Is that? Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Schultz?
So, just a couple of things. So I would ask, what is the objective for the Friday Strategic Plan three hours?
Dr. Garza.
You recall that in the strategic plan, you all actually, we planned that for June, we would have some kind of wrap-up, June, July, where we reflect on this year's reports to see whether or not they met the board's needs. So it's an opportunity for the board to, you know, are there things within the strategic plan that we need to add or modify? But largely, it's going to be around focus on the reports, the metrics, the things that were reported out to you all, and what's missing if we need to adjust the plan in any way.
So, so is there, I'm still at the objective. So is the plan to take away from that three hours, feedback from the board that's gonna change anything? Then I would suggest that, and it could be extremely rudimentary, but there be some kind of fill-in-the-blank, or checklist, or things that in advance you want us thinking about so that we come, look, these are the things that we want your feedback on, these specific things. And then there can always be an other. And then that way, that can stimulate conversation with our constituencies. So we're not just talking ad hoc.
Staff has actually already put together a document, I think, that would serve that purpose, that provides a really good detailed analysis of reports that were provided to you all, questions that were asked that were beyond that. And so that would be, I think, a good way to synthesize. And as soon as you all land the plane on this, assuming that this meets your needs, we'll send that out in advance. So I take your point. I think it's a good one.
All right, then the second question would be, then, and maybe, Ms. Corbin Sanders, this is a little bit feeding off of what you were talking about. What is the goal? Like, are we gonna set goals as a board? Set goals as a board for the Saturday portion, or for the Saturday afternoon portion? I mean, again, setting aside, you know, a day and a half for us to talk to each other is okay, but the question is, what comes out of it? You know, are there goals which we're going to either set then, to which we're going to strive going forward? Are there goals of the actual session that we're trying to meet by the end of, you know, two forty-five on Saturday?
I'm gonna ask Chair and Vice Chair, as you discussed this, in the chairman's meeting, and, thank you, that out of the board self-evaluation, what would you look for as the leaders of the school board?
On self-evaluation particularly, or on?
So the whole, so the whole Saturday seems to be, I mean, the Friday seems to be driven towards the strategic plan, and then Saturday seems to be driven towards the board. And the morning part is role of the board, and then board self-evaluation after, I'm not sure, the LT interface in relation to the role of the board. So I don't know going into that what to expect out of each, the sort of three parts to Saturday, is role of the board, who's presenting that, and in what context. What's the LT interface in relation to the first context? And then is the third part supposed to be in relation to the first two parts? And if so, what is the goal?
Well, I'll start with the last one. The board self-evaluation, we do that annually, or we're supposed to. Now, one year, we were a little bit late in the self-evaluation, but we're required to do that. We require ourselves to do that. So whatever method we have, and I think Karen is right about communication being one issue that we all want to talk about. If you'll recall, two years ago, I think it was two years ago, we had a very lengthy survey that we did, where we looked at where we thought we did well, and where we thought we didn't do as well. We could all go back to that and see, you know, where we thought we needed room for improvement, and, you know, look at that. I mean, I'm so.
But that's more what you're talking about, that we would talk about. What I'm saying is, is that are, there's, I guess there's two sets of goals. One is the goals of the actual session itself, and two, are there going to be actual goals coming out of that for the year going forward?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So, like, the goals of the Saturday, and then the goals.
That goes for ourselves.
Like, are there, is the intent that there will be goals? And maybe, that's why I said, Ms. Corbin Sanders, like, the notion that there'd be a wrap-up, and maybe that's like the next step. Like, and then what?
Yeah. I mean, I think that, personally, I think that would be valuable. And the first, you know, going back to the role of the board, I think one of the things that we felt was that we just needed to clarify certain things, because particularly since we do have four members who just joined us in January, to talk about what is the role of the meeting manager here, and what's, you know, we have a lot of different functions as board members. People take on a role of being a committee chair, you know, what does that entail? So that's, we just thought it would be good to clarify that, as well as the role of the superintendent and board members.
Okay, so I guess that would potentially be my ask, is the identification of what is exactly going to be expected in those three sections? Like, what are the goals of those three sections? And then if there are going to be goals coming out of it, that we articulate that there are going to be goals. You know, I mean, you know, setting of goals, or, you know, identifying goals, or identifying next steps. And then the last would be just something that I've asked for on a number of occasions, which I think sort of fits into this, which is a, and maybe it would be, I don't know, better in the middle section, or maybe the first section, which is the role and the authority of the board in the context of the role and the authority of the chair. And from, you know, not from a historical perspective, but from, you know, how it's supposed to work within the code, and et cetera.
Okay, those, all of those will be discussed. And hopefully, we can do that in one and a half hours. But if you need more time, that is why, you know, the Governance Committee, as we brought up to the full board, is recommendations that we need to hear the full board's feedback, so that we can finalize our retreat, you know, agenda. Governance Committee has one more meeting before the retreat. At that time, we'll finalize the retreat agenda and exact schedule. And Ms. Schultz, you're making up, you know, good suggestions, and hopefully all of those will be incorporated, give you more detail. And I just also want to bring to your attention that Dr. Jimichrow, you know, Hank, has suggested, which the Governance Committee accepted, that he will send out a pre-retreat survey questions to all board members, so that, so that he can hear from individual board members and put them together. And then, as he facilitates the meeting, retreat on Saturday, he can share his own thoughts with us. And then we have a lively discussion. Dr. Garza?
On that same note, Mr. Moon, forgive me, but I think that the Governance Committee also wanted just kind of alert the board, that the Governance Committee wanted an opportunity to look at the survey. And then right after that, it would go out, but just to know that you're, there's gonna be, the timeline's gonna be relatively short on getting feedback back. So just to, just to know that in advance, that there will be a relatively short turnaround time.
Right. I think, I think we can only give about five, six days for you to respond to surveys, but it's not gonna be an extensive survey. So if you can bring your attention right away and complete the survey, they would be appreciated. So any other precise, Mrs. McLaughlin, any other board member who hasn't spoken wants to speak? If not, I'll go to Mrs. McLaughlin, and hopefully wrap up this part.
Just sort of following something that has been touched upon, Ms. Evans, Ms. Schultz, you're correct. I mean, we have four new board members, and so that's about a third of the board. But one of the things that I think is really important for us to be thinking about, just like four years prior, when half the board changed, is I really hope this retreat conversation will be about what the twelve of us want, our role of the board to be, and our individual roles. I think it's very important that every four years, when a board comes together, it does have that conversation about what are, sort of our shared vision, and then also our individual perspectives. So rather than it just be sort of a housekeeping, you know, here's, here's, as we understand it, I hope we really do engage in that conversation about what we all want to bring to our work.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Any other comments, questions? If not, this part of discussion is concluded, and we'll go to next one, is 1.03, update on Human Resources Advisory Committee and discussion of standing committee structure. The first part of this is update on Human Resources Advisory Committee. If you take, if you go to board doc, you know, based upon the notes from the last full-day work session on this particular topic on Human Resource Advisory Committee, at that time, the consensus, as noted in our, reflected in the notes, is that this HRAC, Human Resources Advisory Committee's work is not gonna begin until September two thousand seventeen. And the Governance Committee was tasked to come up with basically a description of these advisory committees, do advisory committees work, and the nature of, basically, nature of the committee. And we only came up with a very simple one. I mean, because, because we have not had this advisory committee before, the first time. Start small and see how that goes. And as far as membership is concerned, the board agreed at the work session that we'll start with a thirteen-appointed, you know, community members, including one from, appointed by student representative. But Governance Committee, at the last Governance Committee, and discussed this, and wants to recommend to the full board that we don't wait until September two thousand seventeen, that as soon as we are ready to go, we hit the ball rolling. It may not be September two thousand sixteen, but if it is ready, we feel ready to go, you know, start sooner than later. That was the recommendation of the Governance Committee. I want to have some feedback from rest of the board members. Yes, Ms. Hines?
So I have a couple of questions about it. This is very general, this description.
Yes.
So I'm wondering, who will create the charge for this committee, and who will set the agenda for the committee? Because I'd just like to know, is there a sample, an example question that this committee would answer? Because I cannot picture what this committee will do, I'll be honest with you.
Okay, let me, before I go to Mrs. McLaughlin, and then Ms. Evans. Okay, it's just coming from one board member here, okay? As far as who's gonna come up with the charge, charge is ultimately approved by the full board, full board. I fully expect the new children vice chair, new chair of the board, would appoint all the advisory committee liaisons. And as in before, that advisory, that school board liaisons to advisory committee are tasked to work with the respective advisory committees to come up with a charge to be approved by the full board. So it will go through the full board, and that one of the, one of the school board members who acts as liaison will be working with advisory committees. And we need to have, we need to form this advisory committee first, and they will appoint members, and they will gather together, and they will discuss amongst themselves what they believe that they could help us with. And then liaison is going to propose a charge to full board, and full board, you know, deliberately, that this is the first year, so never done it. So we'll take, we could take a little more time, board could take a little more time, to be thoughtful about it, in tasking the advisory committee on what to do, as far as what can they work on. There could be multiple issues, as we know that ninety percent of our budget goes into paying for our employees. It's a salary and benefits. So there could be many things that they could potentially help us with. I have Mrs. McLaughlin, Ms. Evans, but before them, let me have Dr. Garza.
I'll only take just a second, but along that same line, I would encourage liaisons to really focus on the strategic plan as we develop our charges for the various committees. For an example, on this one specifically, we have some heavy lifting to do on differentiated compensation models for particularly our hard-to-staff schools. So, you know, that'd be one thing I would love to get their feedback and expertise around. But we have an entire goal that's focused on premier workforce, so there's a lot within that that they could provide us some guidance on.
That's an excellent suggestion. Let's go to Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Evans, Ms. Corbin Sanders.
Dr. Garza, thank you. I know you were with us in that Governance Committee meeting, and that's exactly what we talked about, that it's really important that as the third-largest employer in the Commonwealth, that so much of what makes this a great school system is our great employees. And so having a committee that focuses on our premier workforce, which aligns with the strategic plan, is why the Governance Committee unanimously said, why would we wait another full year? Let's go ahead and, you know, get this committee up and rolling. We're looking at all of the compensation issues. And we very much talked about during the committee meeting, having the committee working with Dr. Garza and her leadership team about how the advisory work they would be helping us complements the work that she's focusing on going into this next academic year. And so I just want to emphasize what Mr. Moon said. We, I really don't understand, when I look at the notes sort of here, how we got to almost another whole year from now. But what the Governance Committee talked about is, this is something we have spent the last six months at least talking about creating this committee. And if we were to wait till September twenty seventeen, we were well within, not only eighteen months of when we started saying this would be beneficial, we would be almost essentially halfway through our terms, and we weren't getting the advice, the advisory benefits. And so that's why I really hope people see the value of this.
Ms. Evans?
And I guess that's, that's where I'm struggling a bit with this, because, you know, our advisory committees, we bring in parents, we bring in community members to help advise us. And I'm just thinking about what the mission of this advisory committee would be. And everything I can think of, it sounds more like advice to the superintendent to bring to us. I'm just trying to figure out how the, you know, how parents and citizens would help us with certain things, you know, celebrate success. We do celebrate success a lot, encourage innovation. I, I don't know. Again, I'm just trying to figure out what this committee would actually do, and how it would help us. You know, the superintendent has the, her teachers advisory committee. She has other, you know, other organizations that help inform her decisions. I'm just trying to figure out how this would add to what we do.
Okay, board basically at the last work session agreed to have this new advisory committee. Governance Committee is just a matter of just advancing the timeline, rather than waiting until September two thousand seventeen. So if you're asking me, you're wondering why we're doing this, now that was the board's consensus. So, you know, having, you know, having said that, this is not advisory committees, they are advisory committees. The consensus was to the school board, not the superintendent. I think there is a benefit out of this committee for the school board could hear from, not just a superintendent. So I will stop right there before I go to Corbin Sanders, Perchick, and Ms. Schultz. I don't want to spend too much time, because we have a standing committee discussion. Okay, Ms. Corbin Sanders?
Thank you. I actually think this is a great idea. And the reason is, is that we have talked about the importance of having such a committee, and looking forward to what the next year poses to the school board, which will be some tough decisions regarding compensation, regarding retirement plans, things like that, that are really important to have, have some advice on. And maybe I need clarification, but when I look at my advisory committee appointees, I look at what we need on those committees. And so I have constituents that don't necessarily have kids in the schools, but would have valuable expertise to bring to this committee. And so I'm hoping that we have the flexibility to do that. I was planning on doing that. I would suggest that, just from a point of clarification, I know that there's been a task force working on some of these issues. Is this to complement that task force, or is the task force work over, and you're looking to use your own advisory committees to provide some input and support, or where are we at on that?
The task force is specifically looking at our health insurance plans, you know, and just looking to the future, what can we do? Yes, only health insurance.
And Ms. Corbin?
And its employee groups, largely.
And Ms. Corbin Sanders? This is not anything that superintendent asks us to have. It's a school board is making that decision.
Yeah, no, I absolutely understand that the superintendent isn't asking us to do this. I do welcome the independent advisory support here, and we'll be supporting moving it up to this fall.
Okay. I have Ms. Perchick and Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. I do agree that it's important, whether it's to us or to the superintendent, that we have this committee, especially to look at a very comprehensive and benefits package. The other big thing I've been hearing about is just how we communicate the information to our employees. So I don't know if that should come to us, or to the superintendent, or both, but I've heard from many employees, just knowing, you know, the intricacies of the different healthcare packages, what they mean, the retirement, just so our employees, especially new hires, understand what that means. And, and secondly, I've just heard so many great remarks on Dr. Ramey, so I know this will move forward well, and I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz?
So, Mr. Moon, I think you originally said it quite well, which is, the question of doing this has already been debated and decided. And I, and I do think that there is, and there was some, acknowledged some hesitation about an HR, you know, quote-unquote oversight role. I don't think that that's what it's intended. But we can't have a strategic plan that talks about the culture of an organization that's a three-billion-dollar entity with, you know, almost forty thousand employees or more between full-time and part-time. between full time and part time and not have a duty of stewardship as a board, to be looking at HR from a board perspective, not from, um, the division's perspective. So I think it's right and proper to have this. Um, I do not support doing a delay on something like this. I, I much prefer something like a dovetail, like if, if HRAC, you know, already has a, um, a charter or a charge for this coming year that is integral, then I don't see any reason why you couldn't, um, merge the two and have that be a subset of the new HRC. But I, I would say that this is one of the most critical things that we could be doing because without the human relations side, um, we can't really deliver a, uh, deliver student achievement goals the way that we're looking to.
Okay. Oops, two more board members, okay? I have, uh, uh, Mrs. Huff and then I'll ask Chairman Heinz as the last one.
So my only question is about the current Human Relations Advisory Committee is what is the obvious, what does it look like for those current appointees and their suggestion for a charge next year?
Okay, until the board actually votes on the motion, which I, hopefully that due, it will come up as a new business at the next meeting and then voted at the first meeting in July. So the school board members could make appointee, make appointments to those advisory committees. The consensus of the board at the work session was we'll phase out the current HRC. That was the decision.
Okay, what would that look, what do you mean phase out? What would that look like?
We will no longer have Human Relations Advisory Committee come July two thousand seventeen. So current HRC will exist just one more year.
Okay, okay, all right.
And charge, what they're gonna be working on next year hasn't been decided because we have enough. So on the charges, I just wanna, as a governance committee chair, as a formal chair, uh, especially for the new board members, uh, wanna alert you that it's the duties, part of the duties of board liaisons to the respective advisory committees, to work with the respective advisory, to come up with the proposed charges for the next year for the advisory committee. And I'm sure the chairman will soon put those on as an action item at the board meeting. So I already have mine from my advisory committee as a suggestion. So start working on your charges. I have Chairman Heinz next.
Okay, yeah, thank you to Ms. Huff because that was one of my questions, is what happens to the current HRC? How long is this gonna take? What are they gonna do in the meantime? And also, so a practical question for me as a board member, I don't necessarily want the person who is now my rep on HRC to be this, the rep for our Human Resources Advisory Committee. That's a different thing altogether. So am I expected to make that personnel change between now and, you know, a month from now? Or can I take more time and appoint the new person sometime during the year or next summer?
Okay, it will be, it will be completely up to individual school board member as far as I'm concerned. And I will have my own appointee on current HRC. But at the same time, whenever this, we have a new Human Resources Advisory Committee, I will also make another appointment to that HRC. It could be the same individual or it could be different individuals, but it's two different committees.
So when, I'm just asking, when will you do that? When will you change your appointment? When am I supposed to change that person?
Current HRC, the board's consensus will exist for another year. So we need to have appointees.
Okay, so, but I'm asking my appointee to HRC now, who is not a Human Resources?
Right, and then you'll make a separate appointment to a Human Resources Advisory Committee.
We're gonna have two advisory committees?
Two advisory committees.
Between now and next year, we're gonna have two HRCs?
Just happen to be the same acronym, but different committees. One is a Human Relations Advisory Committee.
Oh, I didn't know that. We're adding an HRC. We're not replacing.
Oh, the, the first one, first Human Relations Advisory Committee will exist for one more year. That was the board consensus as reflected in the notes.
Okay.
And it will terminate at the end of the next career. And then we're gonna have, meanwhile, we're gonna have Human Resources. We just happen to have a same acronym, you could call that Personnel Advisory Committees.
Thank you, that's helpful. So between now and a month from now, I need to find someone to serve on, I need to have someone to serve on both, is what you're saying. Current HRC and the new HRC.
If the board decided to have a new HRC to start.
Right, but here's the challenge, we're gonna vote on that at the same meeting that we're supposed to vote on our appointees, yes? So I just want to know, I, I have to find somebody, I have to start looking now, right? I mean, that's what I'm asking.
That is why, that is why I, I said at the beginning that we make an appointment to new HRC when we are ready. I don't know when we'll be ready, whether, you know, whether, you know, board members will actually approve at the regular meeting to have Human Resources Advisory Committee. I will, I will never predict ultimate outcome at this point. And once we have, once the board votes and passes to have that new HRC, then we'll be making appointments.
All right, so there's no rush to appoint someone to this?
Not today.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I will have Ms. McLaughlin, McLaughlin as the very last one, really, on this one.
Yeah, I want to make sure Ms. Evans and Ms. Heinz, um, get a chance to hear this because I, I feel like there's a lot of confusion. Really, there's, this is much more simple and straightforward. Um, when the governance committee decided that we wanted to go ahead and get the new Human Resources Committee started, not wait another eighteen months, um, Ms. Heinz, you bring up an excellent question. We did believe that since the committee would go ahead and try to get started this fall, if board members bring their appointments by the first meeting in September, they could even begin their, their first meeting either late September or maybe it's October first. Um, but the main thing is we just didn't want to go another school calendar year. Uh, and then in terms of the, um, existing HRC, um, we never envisioned that those individuals would necessarily translate to the new committee. I think Ms. Corbett Sanders brought up an excellent point. We want to have appointees that have expertise in Human Resources. And, um, so I think it, you, many of us may find that they're gonna be completely different, uh, appointments. Um, in terms of the existing HRC, it, reflecting on the notes, um, from the prior board's conversation, uh, that was, their phase out work for this coming year was simply to take the different, um, responsibilities that they've done over the years and, um, make recommendations on who, which of our, um, advisory committees going forward might take a piece of their work because they were, um, Human Relations. And so that could actually fall into different advisory committees. It may be that as they get together and do their work, they may not need a full year to phase out and recommend where, um, some of their, their focus work has been. Um, and then just finally, one of the things we talked about in governance was the existing HRC was actually the, the parent of MSAOC. So that Human Relations originally was the work we did about our diverse community. And then MSAOC was created as, um, sort of a, a focal point of achievement of our diverse students. And so then oftentimes, the, eh, the Human Relations Committee and the MSAOC looked very similar to one another. So, um, I, I, I'm very hopeful again, we'll vote in July that this is the right thing to do and I appreciate everybody's comments and support for it. And then we can bring our appointments as we think about it in August, um, to that first meeting in September.
Okay, with that said, I just wanna have, uh, or see where the board is on this issue of advancing the timeline of formation of Human Resources Advisory Committee so that we can craft a proper motion for the board to act on. Uh, if you support the governance committee's recommendations to advance the timing of the formation of a new HRC, please raise your hand. Okay, so we will fashion the motion that way. Thank you so much. Now we have, we started ten minutes late, ten minutes late. So we have about twenty minutes to discuss about standing committees. We discussed this, you know, multiple times already, so we don't have to regurgitate all the prior discussion. Why, we just need to come to some sort of, you know, consensus so that we can craft the right motion and we can have another lively debate at the board table, uh, about, you know, if you're gonna do, you're gonna make any changes. So with that, I'm gonna take some comments, suggestions. Whether we keep the standing committees as is, is the starting point? And to that, if anybody is suggesting to make any changes, please share with us. Otherwise, we'll just keep it as is. Mrs. Strauss?
Um, I would support keeping them as is with the exception of this new proposal.
But that's advisory committees, we're talking about standing committees. School board standing committees.
Yeah, no, I would, I would propose that we keep them as is, yeah.
Any other suggestion? If there's any other suggestion, we're keeping as is. Ms. McLaughlin?
As, again, someone who serves on governance, uh, it's easier for me to recall what, what our considerations are. I'm a little concerned that for our colleagues, um, where we have the agenda item details, we don't have anything listed out for you again of what our prior conversations and suggestions were. Uh, one had been that we were going to have, uh, our school board standing committees align better with, um, the school systems departments. Uh, because, uh, similarly, just like with the Board of Supervisors, uh, and many governing agencies, if you want to understand, um, what you're governing and how, uh, you can, um, then work in alignment with the superintendent, that would be beneficial. Uh, and then, uh, Dr. Garza, eh, in working with the governance committee, it also recommended that the standing committees, uh, could also, um, reflect and align with the strategic plan. Uh, but some of the conversation, um, that we'd had was, um, this, those four areas of the strategic plan, like premier workforce, um, caring culture, those, they don't necessarily speak to what is that standing committee and what's the work that it does. Um, but, um, Madam Clerk, I, I think ideally, we would want to be listing them up in front of everybody. Uh, I, I, I really had hoped that we would not just find ourselves for yet another year saying, oh, we're just gonna continue doing what we've been doing, which has been going on for probably more than a decade. Uh, and I, I guess, one possibility is if, if the fact that we've got a third of our board new and if people just feel like they still want a whole year under their belt to really, you know, see a full cycle. Um, but I, I really have concerns about the, the current work of our, of our standing committees.
Mrs. McLaughlin, uh, you made a, you made a many good points, but I wanna take, if you are making any recommendations, any changes, so that I could ask board members for their thoughts.
Well, I, I, I'm recommending, we had brought to the board in prior work sessions, like option one and option two. Without it in front of us and without it in the agenda item details, it's a little concerning to me for my colleagues to know what I'm even talking about. But I am making the recommendation of one of the options we had, which listed out how our standing committees align. Like we would have an instructional services, we have facilities and transportation. Uh, we would have, um, our standing committee on, um, Human Resources. Um, and then I think we, we would have budget still, we would have audit still. So I think in the end, it, it, it ended up, we were looking at either six, six committees or something. But I, I, again, I think it's really important that we pull that information up.
Madam Clerk, can you pull that up from the last committee? Okay. Uh, while the Madam Clerk is putting, yeah, it's up there, it's up there. I thought that we had a lot of discussion about this, that everything would be in your head, but I'm so sorry. Uh, that I have, I had one more hand, Ms. Kofex, Dr. Kofex.
Yes, thank you. Um, Ms. McLaughlin, I think one of the things you said resonated with me most is I think we have several new board members, a third of the board is new. And I think we as a board, I was, um, very vocal at the beginning of this process saying I thought it was too aggressive for us to make, given our current workload, to make these changes in a substantive and formative way that be, because you can do option one, you can do option two, they both have merits. Our current standing committee is just sitting through the last, um, round of presentations. Um, I felt I gained a lot of information and I felt at that point in time, there, you know, as Ms. Strauss, that's the, that's option three, don't change. So at this point, I would go along with Ms. Strauss because I don't feel this board, I think, particularly with the new members, I think it's very difficult for them to weigh in, particularly if they've only been representative on one committee. Um, and, um, so I understand your concern and frustration, but I think this is something that needed a longer timeframe to begin with and that's why I would like it to stay status quo at this point till we can, um, further evaluate.
I have Ms. Schurz and then Ms. Evans and Mr. McLaughlin.
Ms. Corbett Sanders was before me.
Okay, I'm losing all these hands. I also had a Mr. McLaughlin. So with that, I, Ms. Corbin Sanders first.
Great. Um, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We have a retreat coming up where we're gonna do some board self-evaluation. And board self-evaluation includes, are we structured in the right manner? And so I think that, um, the process of self-evaluation also means self-reflection. And I would encourage that we hold off any restructuring of the standing committees until such time that we have a, uh, have our board retreat. And then, as I said before, of at the wrap-up, if at the wrap-up there is a, um, will of the people around the table that we need to restructure ourselves to be more effective and efficient, then, then is the time to have this discussion. And can I just offer one thing which is administrative and not associated with this topic? Other boards I've sat on, when you want to talk, you take your, um, your name tag and put it on the side and therefore we don't lose when people want to speak. And I wouldn't mind introducing that because sometimes we lose who's asked to speak.
Okay, I will give that to Chairman Vice Chair as a suggestion for them to, uh, cogitate and not agitate, cogitate. Uh, I have, uh, Ms. Schurz.
I guess, um, the, I guess the, um, suggestion of, uh, Ms. Corbett Sanders is intriguing. I don't know how that would work in practice if we would just offer to extend our, um, existing committee members and committee structure for, you know, an additional, I don't know, forty-five days or something in order to allow for the retreat to occur. I, I would not be opposed to that at all. Um, I, I, I think that, um, we've become, um, perennial experts at kicking the can down the road. And, um, I think our, our, we have a unique opportunity here to look at, um, something that we've actually been talking about for a long time, um, which is doing, um, a, a reflection of and aligning of our committees. Just because they've always been this way doesn't need, mean, mean they need to continue to be this way. And, um, I know there were some strong feelings, um, on the previous board and particularly with people who are actually aren't on board anymore, um, that there not be any strategic alignment of the committees of the board to what the division does. I, I honestly never thought that made sense. Um, it isn't strategic, it isn't aligned, it isn't planning. Um, and, uh, I also think it doesn't, um, lend a strength to capitalizing on, um, the skill sets of the people at this table and that there are, um, inherent qualities of, um, of each of us that can contribute to the overall work of the board. that can contribute to the overall work of the board. And, and I think that if, the, the more we capitalize on that, the better the work of the board becomes. So I do think that this makes sense. I think it's smart. I think it is, is in fact, looks towards what we're doing with the strategic plan anyway. And I, I think it's a good thing to start this board off on, on equal footing for the next, for the rest of this term.
Ms. Short, may I ask what your recommendation is?
So, so mine is, I'm sorry, I didn't look back up at the board after it was. Mine is the option two.
Option two. I do have Ms. Evans, Mr. McLaughlin and Ms. Hines. And before that, I'll go to Dr. Garza first since she had her initially. Thank you.
I would just, I would just ask the board to consider, you know, I was hoping we'd have a reduction in advisory committees, but without that, all we're doing then is adding, because we've added now another advisory versus reducing advisory. I do like the idea of it being aligned to the strategic plan, but in light of the fact we didn't reduce any of that, this would actually add four more committees. So, so in a total, we'd be adding five next year, five more committees to what we're doing versus narrowing to fewer. So just something to think about in terms of the overall context.
Okay, okay, thank you. I have Ms. Evans next. And I would, I would like to hear from board members who are speaking of their recommendations. Thank you.
So, thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for reminding us of, of where we were before we came in today because that, that's important. I do think we need to change our committee structure. Whether we have time between now and the end of July, or at least between now and September when we come back and start doing our work again, I'm not sure we can grapple with that in that length of time, particularly if we send this back to, to governance. I, so I think perhaps what we need to do is, as Mr. Moon's asked, he wants our recommendation. It may be that we need to keep the current committee structure for another year, but I do think we need to continue to work on this, aligning it. I go back and forth frankly between option one and option two. But I do think we need to have one or the other of those. I, I hear what Dr. Garza says about not, you know, being an overwhelming workload. And I agree about the advisory committees. I think we possibly could revisit collapsing some of those. But I'm still wrapping my mind around these being committees of the whole as opposed to, to the kind of committees we're used to where, you know, four board members help us out. So I guess my recommendation bottom line would be to continue with the current structure for the next year. But to think through whether option one or option two is, is where we wanna go because I, I do think we need to restructure.
I have Mr. McLaughlin to be followed by Ms. Hines.
So my, I, I agree with keeping the status quo. I think that it, that would not be kicking the can down the road. It would be strategically placing the can at a later date. And I think that that would not only give board members, new board members particularly, more time to ponder this, but it would also respect the fact that those who came before us, some of whom, two of whom still sit at this table, went through an extremely in-depth process a decade ago to realign the work of these committees, specifically to get rid, get away from two of the major issues, which were, number one, the fact that the board was spending so much time as a whole at, at committee meetings because essentially they would be committees of the whole. Number two, to, to move away from getting into staff work. Now, I don't, I'm not implying that that's what would happen with these, but that's what the board got away from. And I, I think that would lead me to never be able to support option two. I think I could consider option one. But I, I do believe that we can give this a little more time.
I have Ms. Hines and then any other board member who hasn't spoken before I do go back. Okay, because I wanna wrap up this discussion in five minutes. Ms. Hines, next.
Okay, quick question, then I'll tell you what my, my feeling is about it. Has governance taken any kind of vote on this to recommend any of these options or just laid it out?
There was no consensus. We just, you know, wanted to, consensus was to present it to the full board.
Okay, so there was not consensus on governance to recommend any of these in particular?
The consensus was to present both.
To just, sorry, thank you. So looking at that, I, I, I do have a trouble with the one that's related to our departments. I'm, I'm much more comfortable with the idea and I think we probably should align with the strategic plan better than we do. But I don't, I agree, I don't think we're ready to actually make that happen right now. What I would like us to do is to have that as a goal, to figure out how we take our standing committees and align them better with the strategic plan. So to me, that would be the goal for the next year and not change our committees right now.
Okay, I will have now two go-bags. I have Ms. Dr. Kofax and Ms. McLaughlin. Any other board member? I wanna, Evans, any other? Okay, those three will be the last three go-bags and then that's it, folks. Mr. Dr. Kofax.
All right. I believe that this should be a retreat topic. I think when our, if you recall, when the board, when there were six new members and I was one of those six, these were the kind of conversations we did have in retreats. I don't think there's obviously any time at this upcoming retreat to have that. But I think this is a topic, we can continue to work on it, but it's not really productive to talk about this in these kind of truncated work sessions where we have multitude of things and we have to have short amount of time. This is kind of like looking at our current structure, talking about what we like, what we don't, who gives, where the good recommendations come from, where we could collapse some. I, I, of course, you know, with the strategic plan and my marketing communications background, I think option one is absolutely the way to go, not number two if we go. But I think there can be some kind of hybrid between the two. But I think the best way to do this is, we can continue to have this conversation in work sessions a little bit, but I think there should be a dedicated retreat to this topic.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin to be followed by Ms. Evans.
I appreciate what Ms. Kofax was just saying. I, I will add, I feel like the historian this morning, that we actually did, governance put this on our February retreat, that we wanted to, you know, again, not find ourselves here in June, sort of feeling like, are we really ready to, you know, pull the trigger and do something new here? And what happened in February was the new board members had only been seated for all of like six weeks. So it, it is what it is. You know, I, I very much appreciate everyone's diverse perspectives on this. You know, I'm, being on governance and having this conversation, I'm probably a little more comfortable with saying I wish we could do more. And, and for my colleagues who joined me on the board four years ago, you'll remember that it was four and a half years ago in December, right after we were elected, we had the conversation of our standing committees. And the veterans who stepped off the board said, well, you should live in your house before you renovate it. So for me, I've lived in the house for four and a half years, I'm ready to renovate. But Ms. Kofax, I think you're correct, having a conversation in the retreat. And I would actually like to support what Ms. Corbett Sanders said. We purposely in governance tried to keep all of Saturday in this July retreat to be very much board-focused. So I think, given what we've talked about this morning, when you talk about the role of the school board, there's no reason we couldn't, can't at least allow for that conversation to be part of that dialogue. And, and Ms. Corbett Sanders, you're correct, we'll just see where we are, where we are. But I certainly wanna make that part of, the role of the school board certainly is our standing committees. So, Mr. Moon, the one question I have is, we have, right, well, two points to make. Dr. Garza, you'd, you'd mentioned your concern that either option adds four committees. So whether it's the option on title, it's still four new committees. But if you'll note above where it says, we were gonna revise the charter and the mission of PEC and CPDC and fold them into the new committees, so it would actually be a plus-two of new committees, not a plus-four. Because we would not be having PEC and CPDC in addition to those. So I just want everybody to understand, we're looking at a net of only two standing committees. So I think that's, that's important to note. And, you know, I, I guess, so chair, committee chairman Moon and then chairman Hines and vice chair Evans, here's my concern. Some of us who've served on CPDC over these past four years have been saying, what is its purpose? It was supposed to be a, a time-limited committee to help get FPAC up and off the ground. So if we're gonna have it sitting up there and we continue a status quo into the next academic year, what do you want CPDC to be? And I think that absolutely needs to be ironed out by the July retreat in fairness to any school board member who sits on CPDC because otherwise it's a phantom committee and you get appointed to it as having a role and responsibility and that you actually don't do anything.
Okay, Ms. Evans will be the absolute last one.
Oh, excellent. So I think, here's what I would propose as a next step to, to have, for the next year, keep the committees as they are. I'm hearing from my colleagues that they would prefer, so far, those who have spoken, prefer option one to option two, aligned with the strategic plan. I believe Dr. Garza would, if I'm hearing you right, that you would prefer it being aligned to the strategic plan as well as, so with, with that in mind, I think what we might do is task the governance committee to, to work with option one for the next year and bring that back as our preferred option. I'm seeing this as actually only one additional committee if budget is actually wrapped into resource stewardship. I'm not sure how budget, you know, resource stewardship and budget have too much overlap. So if we did that and wrapped CPDC into resource stewardship, PEC into caring culture, then we would end up with six committees rather than the current five. So that's my recommendation as a next step.
Okay. With that, thank you, thank you for your cooperation. Now, let's see where we, we really are as a collective body. I based upon the conversation, it is my assumption that there isn't enough support to make a change right away, starting from July one. If you disagree, raise your hand. Good, okay, next. Next is, one suggestion is wait until after we are done with the July retreat. The next one is, next one is wait until July of 2017. And we'll have a one full year to, whether it could be July retreat or another retreat, you know, we'll have more time to, you know, ponder about this and then make a decision to be effective July of 2017. I think those are basically two themes flowing around. So I'm gonna ask Ms. Corbett Sanders' suggestion first and see whether there is enough votes. If not, the next one, default position is we'll have a one full year before we make a change effective July 2017. Timing-wise. First option is defer our decision until after July retreat. This July retreat, that's Ms. Corbett, this July, any decision until after July retreat. That's the one. Second is, any change to our standing committees will not become effective until, we're not make, we're not gonna make a decision and this is will not become effective until July 2017. So we'll have a full year. So those are the two, okay?
Well, the first one doesn't say we're definitely doing a change.
Right, it's just deciding, so second one is, okay, first one is just deferring our decision until after July retreat. Second one is, second one is, no change will be made until July 2017. Not necessarily we are saying that we are making any change, just no change will be made until July 17. Okay, we'll go with those two. Okay, defer decision until after we are done with the July retreat, raise your hand, please. Okay? With that, with that, thank you. With that, there is a no-action item for the board to vote until at least we are done with the July retreat. Until, until we are done with the July retreat, there will be nothing.
Could I, could I just ask then, as a matter of process? So then after the July retreat, does governance automatically continue to discuss this and bring it back to the board? Or does a board member?
That will be subject to the discussion at the board retreat.
At the board retreat?
At the board retreat, we'll see.
So we just voted that we will spend time at the board retreat discussing whether, that's what I'm hearing you say, which is why I did not support it because I don't want us to spend time at our July retreat talking about this.
I didn't hear that either. What I was wanting you to add was an additional retreat, but that's, I think that's what we're hearing right now is he thinks that we're discussing this in the July retreat and you don't. So we need to, and I don't understand, I don't know who's right.
When we talk about, when we talk about the role of board, board self-evaluation, LT School Board Interface, which going to, which are the three topics on Saturday of the July retreat, we'll share how we see as, working as a board member for our collective body, it will come up, it will come up. And then, if the board feels that we need to revisit this and make changes, then we will do. How much time we're gonna actually devote on this, that I cannot say right now. But the first option that I asked for the board members to show that, give me an indication of their support or not, was defer any decision on change of the standing of advisory committees until after the retreat.
Assuming, assuming that we will take time at the July retreat to talk about it. Could we clarify that and then get a vote?
Okay, if, again, again, if the board, if the board, board spends enough time or has a discussion comes out of the retreat with an indication the board is prepared to make a decisions, we'll do. If not, further discussion will be required. Okay, that's how I, how I take it. We're just deferring the whole decision because I cannot prejudge what the board members will say at the retreat. So we'll just defer the whole thing until after the retreat. That doesn't mean it's gonna be July 24th, right? It could be just after. Ms. Evans.
So I think we need to see this as a next step and put it up there so we all clarify exactly what we've just decided. If, if we've decided just not to decide anything today and then we're going to have a discussion at the July 20, at the July retreat and then we may or may not decide anything? Is that the idea? Or, or is the chair and vice chair supposed to put this on the agenda again?
Next to chair and vice chair will, you know, based on, you know, depending upon the outcome of discussion at the retreat, chair and vice chair will make their leadership decisions, put something on whatever the work session if they feel that that's the way to go.
Right, but the next step, I think, is that this has, this, the board is saying this must be on the agenda for the July retreat. That's, that's what we're saying.
No, we're not, we're not particularly having this as a retreat topic, but we'll see where the discussion on the role of the board and board, the board's work will go at the retreat. And any change, any decision on any change to advise standing committees will not be made until after the July retreat.
I was trying, okay, go ahead.
And, and when the board or governance committee will need to further, you know, deliberation or recommendation, it will be until after the retreat is done first.
I think we need to see this as, in writing as a next step.
Sure. Madam Clerk, could you put up the screen? Defer decision on change of a standing, standing committees, that's not standing advisory committees, until after July 2016 retreat. Discuss, discuss a retreat as a part of the board retreat.
No, as part of your self-evaluation.
There's also a role of the board. What's the role of your board?
Depending on the outcome of discussion, which the governance committee will, that's not exactly what I said, but that's up there, if you agree with that.
Governance committee may reintroduce the...
Okay, could I see with a show of hands, whether you can support that? Okay? Thank you so much. We'll take a two-minute break. Thank you for your cooperation for the last six months.